Good evening and welcome to the Spencer Board of Selectmen regular meeting of November 13th, 2017. It's approximately 6:00 PM in my court social hall. I wonder if you all rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ralph, we could just keep it legal so you read the first one.
Absolutely. You can make an announcement that any members that are participating remotely in accordance with the Regulation 940, CMR 29.10 of the open meeting law. We all seem to be physically present, so we're covered. I don't know if anybody else is Skyping in to...
Join us.
Join us. Doesn't appear that way, but thank you.
I like playing with a toy. That's too bad.
I know. It's a great toy, by the way.
It is.
I'm envious of you.
First item, meeting minutes. Business meeting of October 23rd, 2017, and a special meeting of 10:30 17.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve with an amendment, October 23rd, 2017, minutes on page two. If you look just below the list of names, it says Paul Boulay said it was a great opportunity, blah, blah, blah. I think it was Jim Bouley who said that. So I would ask to double check on that, please, Brenda, and make sure that we got the right name and the right spelling and all that, okay?
Great. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now move, Mr. Chairman, to approve the minutes of the special meeting of October 30th.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Communications. Does the town administrator or any members of the board have communications they want to share?
Nope. Nothing tonight.
Okay. Very good. Would anyone like to come forward and be heard in citizens' input? We'll have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting. New business. Oh, just about tech. Do we have to keep it legal? We start?
Yeah, we gotta wait.
Okay.
You gotta wait till 5:00 past.
Okay.
If there's something else, you can jump.
How about the... These are all in the 6:05 meeting?
Yep.
Actually, I think you could vote on C.
Yep.
And D.
Yes.
C and D you could do.
Let's move on to an action item. A vote to approve a 2:00 AM closing on New Year's Eve for establishments with alcohol pouring license. Is this something we usually do every year?
Motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Action item, request of Barnstorm Cycles for a one-day special alcohol wine and malt license for Barnstorm's Winter Barn. Gentlemen, just to be clear.
It's actually Winter Open Barn.
Oh, sorry. I'm being right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen.
This is just our annual open barn that we've been doing ever since we existed, open to customers and the public. Nothing special about it. Depending on the weather, maybe entirely indoors, or it may flow out into our fenced area.
Excellent.
Brendan, you got everything you need on that?
Yes, I do.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Just to be clear, there are no events, no demonstrations, no stunts. This is all quiet, all inside.
Correct. Won't be dead silent.
Never is.
I'm not too quiet.
But it'll be quiet.
Yeah, in comparison.
Nothing else.
Great. Anything else? I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There you go, gentlemen. You're all set. Looking forward to another event.
All welcome.
Brenda, can I see the gravel permit?
Great.
The gravel permits.
Oh, I gotta go get them.
Thanks. Talk to you soon.
Thank you.
I think you got the listing.
Can you move on?
That's all part of the same public hearing.
Okay. Yeah. All right, you moved pretty quickly. Just have patience with us. We'll get up with the public hearing legally.
Brenda has to get the licenses anyway, so I had a question on one. Sorry to make you do that, Brenda. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm waiting for the bong to go off. Keep it legal.
It's at the end of the line.
All righty. Awkward silence. Sorry, folks.
Go right by that clock.
Yeah. Go by there. Okay, 6:05. I'd like to open up a public hearing to discuss and vote on annual license renewals for Class II auto dealers, Class III salvage dealers, and gravel permit operations for calendar year 2017. Open up meeting at 6:05. Public hearing at 6:05. So let me move on first.
Well, if you do the Class II, I'll recuse myself when you get that on your...
Okay.
The proper way is to open the hearing, see if there's any in the public that have any comments.
Right.
Then close the hearing and then move...
Then vote.
Move forward on the votes.
Yes. Okay. We've opened a public hearing. Anyone want to come forward? Any comments?
On any of those categories.
On any of those categories that I... That you're all here for. Do I need a motion to close? Or do I close it myself?
I'd have a motion to close.
Motion to close.
I have a motion to close. Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so you want... Let's go on to the... What'd you say? The gravel license or the class?
Gravel is first, right?
Yep.
So we can handle that one. And the second one would be Class II. I'll recuse myself on that portion.
Okay. I need a motion on the gravel.
Are we going to take them individually?
Do we usually go them as a...
We list them all.
We list them all, but we... Last time we did them one by one, so if there's a... Do you have a particular question, Ralph?
I have some questions.
Okay.
I came up last week and looked at the license applications, and all of them were pretty much in order with the exception of one that I have some concerns about, and it happens to be in my backyard.
That's number four on the list, I'm assuming.
Yeah, you've got a list. You're doing better than me. It's Kabinski's pit.
Yeah.
There's no gate. This is from the inspection now, okay? This is nothing that I... You know, nothing that I dredged up. This is from the inspection report. We trust our building inspector... Thank you, sir. We trust our building inspector to go down there and take a look at things, and the Conservation Commission also. And they go down and they look at it, too. And there is no gate to stop cars from going in there, which includes people who dump mattresses and other stuff that are in there. I have seen stuff dumped in there years ago. Evidently, it's still happening. That's a real concern of mine. You know, I live in South Spencer. I want you to think about this. My tax rate is the same as everybody else's. We have the former town dump, now the town transfer station. We have the sewer department there with their fine facility. We have the former filter beds. We have the railroad tracks that run in the back, including the railroad that operates all hours of the day, night, seven days a week, 12 months a year. And we have the gravel pit, all right? And it is a dumping site. The railroad, by the way, was a dumping site also. And when I was on the board back in the '90s, we questioned it, and then they finally put gates up, which stopped the dumping from going on. It was... The railroad was really pretty bad. People were going up there all the time and doing that. My other concern is the condition of it itself, all right? It says extremely steep, near vertical, unstable, unreclaimed slopes still exist. No remediation of the pit has been attempted yet. The pit is still active. Before the pit is abandoned, loam and organic material then seed must be spread on all denuded surfaces to foster adequate reclamation within a reasonable timeframe. Reestablishing an organic soil layer is particularly important for protection of water quality and the underlying public water supply aquifer. It is extremely difficult, if not impossible, to stabilize the nearly vertical slopes lies that presently exist, some of which are very close to property lines, all right? My real concern is, folks, that, you know, if something happens, and this program should go south, all right, and the gravel pit ceases to exist, and let's say Kabinski goes out of business, God forbid bankrupt, and I don't wish that on them or anybody, we're going to have one H of a mess to take care of down there. And it will fall back on the town, okay, and our limited resources. And I want some assurances, and I want something in writing, all right, that this is... That these two things are to be taken care of. The gate, okay? And I understand it's going to be hard to put a gate in there because it's pretty wide open when you go in, all right? It's not like it's a narrow entryway, like with the railroad. The railroad had a very narrow entryway to get in and get up there. This is much wider. But something needs to be done. Rocks can be put there, boulders, and then a gate in between them. And they need to start reclaiming the land. It's... You're all not going to remember this, but about 20 years ago, there was a teenager in there in an old K-5 Blazer, the full-size Blazers, all right? And he went up the side of one of those slopes, and he didn't make it, all right? And he got killed because when the car flipped, a spare tire that was unsecured in the back in the hatch hit him in the back of the head. I remember this because I live right in, you know, right in front of the gravel pit, shall we say, on Lyford Road. And I remember that happening, all right? Had there been a gate there, that young man may not have died, all right? And I don't want to see that happen again either. So I don't know how to handle this. Maybe, Bill, you have some thoughts. I don't want to stop their permit from being reapproved. I don't want to put them out of business. I certainly don't want to do that. But I want these things taken care of. This is ridiculous. This has gone on for many, 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 many years. Nobody else seems to have this problem but this particular pit. And I... The trucks go by my house every day. I put up with them, and that's what I do. I put up with them, all right? I'm willing to put up with them, all right? But these are things that must be taken care of as a good neighbor, or next year, I'm not going to be inclined to approve the license, and I would hope the rest of the board would not be inclined to approve the license. So what... Mr. Ross, do you have any suggestions, please?
Well, first off, when does this have to be renewed? Is it a January 1 renewal?
Yeah. They can't do everything all at once. I don't expect that.
You've had your hearing...
Yeah.
...on this. A couple of options. One would be to approve the permit with conditions that by a year from now, they come in with a plan... Or before that, that they come in with a plan to...
I want a plan before that. I want the work to be done if possible.
And another one would be to hold this one off and invite them to a future meeting and visit with them about it. That's really up to your discretion. I don't know what kind of rules or regulations you have governing these pits, if it's all state or if there's some local on that. But if there are local conditions, certainly they need to be enforced. As to future closure and so on, and this becomes at this late date because I suspect this pit's been in operation for a number of years.
This goes back to at least when Roger St. Dennis owned it in the 1960s, when I was a kid.
Because really, the only long-term way to guarantee reclamation is to require them to post some sort of letter of credit or a bond.
A bond.
But you're probably way too late on that pit to do that at this point in time. So the best alternative I could think of would be to approve it with conditions and set a time that you want them to submit a plan to address those issues.
Mm-hmm.
And I, you know, I don't know what's reasonable. 60 days, 90 days, whatever's reasonable on that. That would be probably the best alternative if that's the direction the selectmen feel is appropriate.
I'd like to do something like that. I don't want to stop them from operating. They... I'm sure they have commitments that they need the gravel for, and I don't want to be responsible for them having a business issue. But by the same token, I want this taken care of. I don't want to have the town have to take care of it down the road.
To the chair.
Ralph, first of all, thanks for, you know, for identifying some of the issues because I must say that we rarely get into some of the details of the pits, but you bring up the subject of the gates. I guess my first question would be, are gates required on the pits? In which case, it's some local conditions or requirements?
Yeah, that I don't know.
I think it's a reasonable requirement.
Given the situation.
It shouldn't be wide open. It's a business. It shouldn't, in my opinion, it shouldn't be wide open. This isn't the 1940s or 50s or 60s. I mean, this is 2017. There should be some attempt to keep the general public out of there from either horsing around and dirt bikes going there, too, kids on dirt bikes. We just had a terrible ATV accident in North Brookfield a couple of weeks ago where a teenager lost his life. And people go in there and they pollute. They dump things that they don't want to spend $10 to put a mattress, you know, down at the transfer station, or $5 for a couch. So they dump it on the side of the road, or they dump it in the gravel pit.
I guess my point is, through the chair again, is that it's not fair to sort of lay on a new set of conditions if it's something that we think is... You know, should be there and installed for safety reasons across the board. I just... I guess we need to know what the... So what the requirements are of our gravel pits and the operators because it seems like a reasonable request. But it wouldn't be fair to withhold the license here because there... Because this is one we happen to be aware of. If the others, you know, were also guilty of not having a gate, I mean...
Bonds get a gate. I don't know about all the others, you know.
Through the chair. All of these pits are regulated through the state, through the mining... Help me. Mining?
Yes. So we're governed by the Mine Safety and Health Administration, which is a federal entity. My suggestion would be to be able to contact them, check on the mine number because Hampshire comes in and texts us if you're a registered mine a minimum of twice a year. And under those regulations, you do have to have your pit secured, posted, and the slopes have to be adequate and safe. So really, their are governing, would be, and it's federal. Our local office is out of Manchester.
Thank you, Mrs. Kylie. So I don't think we ought to hold up a license.
I don't want to do that. I never said I want to do that.
But I think, you know, the state notification, and I agree with Mr. Hicks, that, you know, you can't have people going through these pits because I know they're fun to play in, but they're really not where you want to be playing because they're dangerous. You know, you've got slopes, and you also got soil that moves, you know? These people are trying to run a business, and they shouldn't have to... I mean, they should have to close it off, but they shouldn't have to worry about people going in there when they don't belong in there, you know?
I agree. I... Through the chair. My only thing would be, and I agree, Ralph, we shouldn't hold up the license. I guess what I would say is that we ought to reach out to them and actually see if they had the inspections done over the last year. That's going to tell the story in itself. If they haven't, that's a different problem. So I would definitely say that we should reach out to Kabinski and see, in fact, if the inspections have been done, when the last time they were. And that will kind of tell you, even though, Ralph, I know you're saying it's an active pit.
Well, it's a very active pit.
I know what you're doing and where to level that off and get that so it can't be soil slid, and I guess is a good reason, so... And that is the right way to do it, so... But I would suggest if we approve it, we approve it with the stipulation, we would like to see their last reports on that.
I want to tell you, these other permits, Mr. Chairman, all right, have... Most of them have no report at all, no problems for the Conservation Commission, all right? Are very minor ones, already. They mentioned ones that have been resolved, right? This pit has a lot of problems with it, and that's our Conservation Commission speaking. And they do have power under state law. And I'm all for bringing the feds in from Manchester or wherever they are. That's a great idea. But you board members haven't looked at these. You need to recognize the fact that this particular pit has problems above and beyond, you know, from what I can see, any other pit in town. I mean, you can read the status for the Conservation Commission on the others and see that there's... Most of them have no issues whatsoever. The couple that do are very minor issues. And I want to state, I don't want to shut them down. I want to work with them, but I'm not going to sit here for another year and let things go on as business as usual. It's a very active pit, all right? And vehicles do go in there, particularly at night, all right? And somebody is going to get killed again. And the rabbi's going to say, oh, isn't that a shame? And two weeks later, forget about it. I'm not going to forget about it. I don't forget about that kid that died many years ago, all right? I don't... I'm not going to forget about the trash just being dumped in there either. Clearly said mattresses, et cetera. I mean, there's a place for those down on the transfer station, not sitting out in the gravel pit. And those slopes need to be... If they're done with a part of it, they need to be good neighbors, and they need to grade them and seed them, all right? So there is an erosion so it doesn't pollute the water. There's a reserve... The reserve town wells are how far from that site?
Where do these come from?
Well, less than a half a mile, maybe a quarter of a mile is where the crow flies. That's where the reserve town wells are.
Also get that.
Enough said.
Through the chair. Can we make a motion to accept all the other permits and just waive this one until another time when Mr. Kabinski has a chance to come in and say his piece?
That's right.
And then, you know, so we're not holding everybody else up and, you know, not hold his license hostage, but just hold it back until he can explain what his plans are. He might have plans for this pit, but I think he should have his say, you know?
Yeah.
Right, you know, now before, you know?
And that's fine. We can do that.
So I make a motion that we accept the rest of the permits as they're written for the gravel pits, and we hold back on Mr. Kabinski's until he has a chance to appear before the board.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
Just to clarify, in terms of inspection history, would you be looking for him to bring proof of it, or would we... Do we have to contact the feds separately? How?
I think he has. He bears that. He bears that.
Okay.
To prove that he's been in touch with the feds, and he's got a clean bill of health.
Okay.
And at that point, then, I agree with Mr. Hicks, we have to, you know, require that he... With boulders or some way to block off that entrance, so...
Yep.
Hey, no one gets hurt, but also just kind of control what's going on there.
That's a good solution.
All right, so I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So when do you think we want to try to work to get...
We got to have the town administrator's office notify him.
Right.
Yeah. I made a note.
So you notify him, and you'll get him on the next earliest schedule we have coming.
Will do.
We have the 27th. I don't know if that's too early.
This runs out on January 1st is when the new one takes effect.
So you're there, a meeting in December.
Early in December.
Through the chair. Brenda has asked that we list each one of these individually and accept them individually.
Yep.
All right. Let's go.
Start reading.
I make a motion that we accept the first one. Barn Construction on Cranberry Meadow Road.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, the second one down, Barn Construction, North Spencer Road.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number three, Barn Construction, 97 Hastings Road.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number four, Kate Kabinski, that we hold off until he has a chance to come before the board.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number five, Robert Buschini, Royal Crest Farm LLC, 30 Howe Road.
Seconded.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number six, Leo O'Coin, 89 Cranberry Meadow Road.
Seconded.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, Peter Zoukas, 89 Smithville Road.
Seconded.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful.
Nice job.
You guys are all set.
Thank you, Mrs. Kylie, for your information.
Wealth of knowledge.
And thanks for bringing that up again, Ralph. Identifying that.
You're welcome.
Gives me a little education in gravel pits.
Take care.
We move on to the Class II licenses.
And I'm going to go on the other side and recuse myself on this portion.
Okay.
We're going to miss you, Gary.
All right, so any discussion points on this list? Anyone?
I make a motion that we accept all 13 as they're written.
Are we okay with that, Brenda, the way that?
Yeah, it would just be helpful. You don't have to make a motion on each one, but just list them in the motion.
Read them all.
Read each name.
All right, all 13. Number one, Brian's Auto. Number two, Car Finders Now. Number three, Dennis Auto. Number four, Easy Way Auto. Number five, Fernandez Auto Sales. Number six, Hilltop Auto Sales. Number seven, Main Street Auto Sales. Number eight, Next Gen Auto. Number nine, Ronald Brown Auto Sales. 10, Small Car Clinic. 322 Main Street. 11, Spencer Motor Sales. 12, Straight Line Auto. And 13, WR Central Auto Sales.
Seconded.
I have a second, any discussion?
Just to clarify, Brenda, is the... What is the businesses moved into old, the Spencer, Spencer Autobody there on, on Main Street? Is that Next Gen?
Car Finders, they're on here, Car Finders.
Okay, I didn't know the name. Okay, that is Car Finders, okay.
No.
Yeah.
They're working there?
Oh, Spencer Autobody.
I'm, yeah, I'm.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thanks for that. I didn't know what he was called. Okay, that's, that's Alf, calling it Alpha? Okay. I saw people in there, didn't know if they were on this list.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? You're all set. Class three licenses. Someone like to?
Make a motion to approve Durgan's Valley Garage for a class three license.
A second.
I have a motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Class one license renewals.
I move that our own equipment, Clem Tractor Incorporated, Barstone Sample, Cycles, be approved for a class one license renewal.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question.
Yeah.
Does Barnstorm, is class one, those are new vehicles, right? Does Barnstorm sell new vehicles? He builds new ones, he builds motorcycles. I wondered about that. That's cool. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alcohol license renewals.
Who's gonna read that list? It's a long list.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
I make a motion to approve the following alcohol license renewals. One, Black and White Pizza, Eater and Grill. Two, Charlie's Diner. Three, Chef Sau. Four, Spencer Country Inn. Five, Zoukis Hilltop Barn. Six, Country Spirits. Seven, Liquor Barn. May Inc. LLC. Spencer Package Store, number eight. Number nine, Bayberry Bowling. 10, Laney's Variety. 11, American Legion. 12, Fish and Game.
Let's stop there with that group. Do a motion for that group of, the next one is a separate group, let's just vote on them separately. We're requesting additional information.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
No, I think the latest was, those are the Mexicali Nights at Columbus and Express, I believe, are all fine too. Everything came in.
Okay. I think the next, the next two.
13, Mexicali Grill. 14, Nights at Columbus. And 15, Express Mart.
Seconded.
Okay, second, any discussion?
I, I get a question, just a clarification, the, the new Frango's Grill there with the old Kaboodles, is that? What's, what's the status there? Did they, did they have a liquor license?
Yes, no, no liquor license.
No liquor.
Just the common victual.
Okay.
Are they applying for one, do you know?
No, no plans anytime right now.
Is it, is it a bring your own? Is it, is, is that?
Nothing.
Do we have to, do people who have, have bring your own, those are, they don't have to apply?
They haven't asked for anything at all.
But if you have a, but if you have a BYOB arrangement, you don't have to?
So, I was told by Lee Jobs in the past that there are no regulations. It's just they do have to let the town know and the board help know. But it's regulated as if you were having alcohol in your home.
Oh, okay. All right, that's helpful. Didn't know that. All right. And just to be clear, we, we, we mix up package stores and, and pouring and serving, places that serve alcohol as well as just sell it in packages? So that's all in here?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right. Do we have?
Then there are, there are two that we're recommending approval with condition that proof of updated TIPS certification is provided. And they will need to provide that before we can submit these to the state, as I recall. Is that correct, Brenda?
Right.
Do you have a motion in that fashion, please?
I'll do that. To approve Ethiers Cafe, Yamato Asian Bistro. Subject to TIPS certification being provided to us. Second.
I have a second, discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Granville's situation?
Right, they need to provide us with a certificate of insurance and when that is done, we can submit them to the state as well.
Nice move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Dumb question, where's Granville's Pub?
The Old Timers.
Oh, the Old Timers, okay. You don't get out. They can't have wedges. For those, for those of us that are, that are old. You know that name, you don't get out much, huh, Ralph? Not the bars, I'm sorry.
Never done the midnight stroll?
No, 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 no. Hey, you got till 1:00 o'clock this year to do it.
Yeah, 2:00, New Year's.
2:00, now on New Year's Eve, if you wanna make the trek.
All right, next set is the common victual license renewals. Who's gonna read this?
I think somebody else should do it. Warren and I are tired.
Hey, John.
Sure.
You want us to read us a bedtime story?
I move to approve the following common victualers license renewal, renewals. Big Y Foods. Camp Marshall. Dairy Queen. Dashboard Diner. Dip and Donuts. Edible Arrangements. Five Lo's Bakery. Speedway. Costa's Cafe. Lincoln Hill Manor. McDonald's. Pizza Hut. Price Chopper. Spencer Donuts Incorporated, East Maine. Spencer Donuts Incorporated, West Maine. Spencer Pizza House. Subway. Tebow's Country Store. Tupin's Catering. Village Pizza. Sestration Abbey of Spencer. Trappist Abbey. Saint Joseph Abbey Guest House. First Congregational Church. Mary Queen of the Rosary. American Legion. Black and White Restaurant. Ethiers Cafe. Granville's. Mexicali Grill. New Fortunes Doing Businesses. Chef Sau. Red Maple Inn. Spencer Country Inn. Spencer Fish and Game. Turner's Catering Doing Businesses. Charlie's Diner. Yamato Asian Bistro. And Zoukis Hilltop Barn. And John's Pizza did not submit renewal documents, so we expect them to? Yeah, okay. Again, I guess ask about Frango's, is that, do they?
So because he just got his license, we're not doing it, you know? He's gonna renew, but without having to pay the other fee. So he just literally got it, so his is good till.
Oh, the following. I see, gotcha, all right, great.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one question. On Granville's, still waiting for insurance?
That was for the pouring license, I believe.
It's not for the common.
Not for common.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Innkeeper's License Renewals.
I would approve the Red Maple Inn, Spencer Country Inn, Zoukis Hilltop Wine. More an innkeeper's license?
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Amusement License Renewals.
Number one, Bayberry Bowling, Granville's Pub, Price Chopper, and Ethiers Cafe.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Entertainment License Renewals.
I'll take that. American Legion, Bayberry Bowling Center, Black and White, Mexicali Grill, New Fortunes Doing Businesses, Chef Sau, Granville's Pub, Nights at Columbus, Spencer Country Inn, Spencer Fish and Game, and Zoukis Hilltop Barn.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Junk Dealer License Renewals.
I move to approve the following Junk Dealer License Renewals. Cormier Jewelers, William Echo Berry Jr. and Jane M. Coins and Collectibles.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Lodging House License Renewals.
Lodging House is 1 Smock, 126 Main Street and 204 Main Street. Do we have everything from Smock?
Yeah, that's the one right here.
Yes, and the updated.
Okay. Okay. Great.
126 Main Street and 204 Main Street. Yeah.
Just as a point, I, I thought we had established a quarterly get together with, yeah, with those folks. I'm gonna get together with you, Bill, we'll discuss. We, we had an issue at one point where we thought there was too, too many activities going on over, over at their building and they came in and I, they, they have put a clamp down on it, but we thought we would meet with them at a regular basis, discuss how things are going.
I did, I did visit with the general manager of the entire corporation today. We've made a date to get, try and get together in the next two, three weeks. You, you have us an opportunity to visit with him about that.
Very good.
Okay, great.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There we go. Any else on the?
Mr. Chair. I would like to commend to you the hard work that Brenda does on all these license renewals.
It's amazing.
She's diligent. She is very careful to make sure everything is there. And if something isn't there, she makes phone calls and reminds folks, you have to get this in or you won't get your license. It's a lot of work and well done, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Brenda.
As always, fantastic, thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Not surprised.
All right, let's move on to old business, please. Special Town Meeting Warrant Review Draft Motions.
Mr. Chair. In addition to that, we have, and I have to pass out two, two amendments to motions. There should be one for each of you there. And as we go through the articles, when we get to those articles, I'll visit with you briefly about the amendment for each one.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have this, buddy? You probably did it. I took the list that you gave me and put in the names of the person making the motion and the second. And then Brenda reduced that to page by page.
Okay.
So that we have it set up that way. And so I guess you can take a look at them if you have questions on any specific ones going through it. But I think we've been through these in the past. And if I got them wrong, Mr. Chair, as to who was assigned to which, let me know, but I think I got them right on the, on the memo. And Brenda did double check it.
Yeah, I checked them when, when you sent them to me before, so I have a good. Do you want to discuss these amendments?
Yes. Item, Article Eight, which is the amendment to the personnel bylaws. The way that we had originally written it, town council looked at that and said, I would suggest strongly that we write it in a different manner. And so there is an amendment to that motion that is exactly the language town council sent me on that. And it's been reviewed with Chief Parsons. So the way to handle amendments, because talking with Laura, she doesn't remember any of her having been done. So the way to handle those is, in this case, on Article Eight, Selectman Woodbury is assigned to move the article. Selectman Monette to second it. Then that article is pending on the floor. Then the proper motion to do the, to introduce the amendment, and this is straight out of the town meeting handbook and approved by town council is, and this should be made by the person who made the motion and seconded, is I move that the pending motion be amended with the following language. In this case, delete the last sentence related to hours of work and replace the sentence with the following language. Full-time firefighters shall receive overtime for hours worked over 53 hours per week over a two-week, two-week pay period. No, that needs to be 106. We still don't have it right, I thought I had it right. Or do I?
Well, down below, I think you'd, I. You, you.
Yeah.
If you read it at the bottom, the rationale behind it.
53.
Okay.
Okay.
No, this is exactly how the town council wrote it.
Which, which is fine, because it says so here. And the good thing is, is it has to be in writing to the moderator, this is, this.
We will give that to the moderator and we'll have a copy for the town clerk.
Just confuse it. That's fine.
Yeah.
Now, the reasoning for that is FLSA, the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act, has different hours of work for firefighters.
Right.
They're allowed to work more hours because in many instances, they work a 24-hour shift. And in a lot of states, firefighters work one day on, two days off, one day on, two days off. So they average about 53 hours a week over a period of 12 months. And they do get paid overtime above that. Massachusetts has some different things when you get into collective bargaining. But in talking with the chief and with town council, we'll start with this. And then if we do collectively bargain, we'll, we'll work on that. But we want to start from, from this position. The actual plan for these firefighters is to work 42 hours a week, Monday through Friday. And they, not all, not all four will be on at once. Chief has explained that schedule in the past. And then if they get called back and they end up with more than 53 hours, they'll get overtime for that period of time. They'll get straight time for everything between 42 and 53. All right, any questions on that?
Just to clarify, so it has to, it's, so it's, it's not just 106 over, over two weeks? Like you couldn't do 54 in, in, in one week and, and, and do the balance of the 106 in the next week?
That's right.
Okay, so we are, we are setting a weekly limit?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
The second one is in response, and this is on Article 10. This one. I'm sorry. And this is in response to the discussion at the last meeting where you held a public hearing related to the snow removal on the sidewalks downtown. And so we put together, working with Steve, a change in that that reduces the area on the east side of downtown to the area where the street, new streetlights are in place. And the rest of the area would not be covered by this. You will also note that nowhere in there does it talk about Pleasant Street at this point in time because the town owns the property, we're responsible for it anyway. Should that property in the future be transferred to private hands, then the town could bring before the town meeting a proposed bylaw change to require it. But at this juncture, it really doesn't make sense to include that one. There was no change on the portion of Mechanic Street. So that's left as is. And so, and we, we think we made this just a bit clearer, but again, in that case, Mr. Hicks, you'll be making the motion.
Yes, John and I drew the short straws on that one.
But, but Ralph will immediately follow with, with the change.
Congratulations.
And again.
Thanks, Tony.
The proper motion to amend is I move that the pending motion be amended in the following manner, and then list that. And then, and I know the moderator knows this because that's his job, but you vote on the amendment first. And then you vote on the motion as amended, assuming town meeting agrees.
Ah, okay.
Will this be, Mr. Chairman, will this be attached to the packet the voters get at the town meeting? Will the amendment be attached?
We should attach it to the.
To make it a little easier for them to notice it before we start?
Yeah, we should.
The meeting?
That's a good thought.
I would suggest that. Thank you.
And I, I have, did have a conversation with one of the leaders of the American Legion who stopped in town hall, and I told him we were moving forward with that amendment. So I believe they know that we're doing this.
They do.
Moving forward, so. And I think, I guess I would commend town council for having the good sense to say you need to have a meeting with these folks before town meeting, it makes it a lot easier.
Yep.
Rather than get on the floor and have to do this.
Right, oh, much easier.
Yep. Unless there are questions, that's what I have on this.
Make a motion to approve the, the warrant, the warrant changes?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this? Thanks for the changes, Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All righty. Next up, town administrator's report.
I have a, I have about four quick things. One is, and you mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting. Brenda and I would like to suggest that we send you the packet electronically through email as soon as it's available. And then we would have written copies available for you. But that way you would be assured of getting your packet and being able to see it and read it. And then we can have the paper copies available for anyone who wants it. But given how long the mail is taking and holidays and all of that, that's a suggestion. It's up to you whether you would like us to do that moving forward. And we can continue to mail if you don't want the electronic packet or if you find that it doesn't work for you. But certainly that's something that would get it to you so you'd have adequate time.
Mr. Chairman, it's a good idea. The only thing I would say is that if we have an exceptionally large agenda, I would still like the packet mailed out because looking at a computer screen for more than, you know, 45 minutes an hour starts to give me problems.
Yeah, I understand.
One of the things I don't miss about work is being on a computer for a good part of the day. Miss a lot of the things about work, but not that. And, but you know, like this agenda, for example, no problem sending that out ahead of time electronically. She can note in the email that this is not being mailed, so we know not to expect it. And certainly before, if, if a holiday has intervened like it did this week, this past week with the mailing, don't even bother. I got mine at 4:48. I got mine at four forty-eight. At that point, I wasn't going to read it. But I came up to the town hall this morning, and Brenda was kind enough to make me copies of everything. And I went home and I read it, so that when we, we come in here, we're not blindsided. Hopefully, we have time to read them. But if you get them at the last minute like that, with about an hour's or less notice, you don't have time to read it. So it definitely should be on the computer, and, and that would be it. And we know that that's. But if it's a thick, thick packet, unless there's a weekend involved with its, the mail delivery is going to be halted for a day, a day extra, I'd like to see, I'd like to see it mailed under those circumstances. But otherwise, I'm fine with the electronic stuff.
Yeah, we, we've wanted to do this change for like eight years. But it seemed like every year, we had someone who had email issues or no printer at home, and he runs the printer at home. So I'm, I'm fine with it too, and, because I get, I had to get mine late as well, so. Any other issues?
No. The only thing I would say, Brenda, and to save some time, and as far as the weekly reports that come with it, you can mail those or even put those into our boxes if you have to. Because when they come as a PDF, you know, normally if you've got four different PDFs and you open them or you download them all, it hits all at once. But I, I think this is the right way to go. We talked about it a few years ago, and it's simple and easy. I don't know how everybody else feels, but you gotta print all the other stuff.
Yeah, save papers.
Well, I think we're all here at some point or another, we can grab it out of our boxes.
And there is software that you can actually make a PDF out of all of these. You can make one PDF and tab it, so that if you.
Right.
Punch on the tab.
You draw that one out.
Supporting information is there. That's a little more complicated, but it saves a lot of time.
I'm willing to learn. Stop by and show me.
But we can, we can experiment with that. The one thing, if it doesn't show up.
I think that's a great idea.
Let us know.
We've talked about that.
Sometimes, sometimes you might have a filter that grabs those things or grabs attachments. Sometimes, depending on which email service you use, you may have a limit on the size of attachments. And so, if, if it doesn't show up, and, and I think best thing to do is send a, one email when we're starting this, saying, "We're sending the packet." Then if you don't get it.
That's a great idea.
Let us know.
Yep, great idea.
And that's pretty easy to do.
And again, like I say, Tony talked about this a few years ago, getting it done. And I think it's the right move with them closing shoes very now. All you, it's funny, you can mail something here and hope it's going down the street. It's going to Boston, then it's going to get sorted, then it's going to get re-ruined to come back. Logistics, I guess.
So we'll, we'll go that route, and if any issues, we'll, we'll adjust along the way.
Yep.
Okay.
Secondly, we received our preliminary allocation for CDBG funds for the coming fiscal year. It's a little over five hundred thousand dollars. In the past, that, those funds have been used for road projects or construction projects. One thought that Paul and I talked about was a workshop session with representatives from the regional planning group that works with us. And we can talk about whether we want to continue with construction or maybe look at some economic developments, some downtown renovations, some light elimination, those kind of things. Because talking with Steve Tyler today, we're going to be doing probably two to two and a half million dollars worth of street work next summer at least. And so, we're going to have things pretty well torn up as we go into it. And so, I thought at least you should have the opportunity to discuss that, probably early in January, but we'll try to arrange that, because we're only probably going to have a couple of meetings in December, looking at schedules. And if that's, that's something you want to discuss.
Yes.
Certainly, we can go that direction.
Yep.
Okay. There's an update on the Highway Thirty-One project posted on the town website. But I do want to briefly mention Maple and Charlton Road. The base and their intermediate course of asphalt is down on the entire stretch. The installation of underground drainage is basically done. There's some catch basins to finish and some curb work and so on to do. They will, the contractor will be buttoning this up for the winter. There's still the speed limits down there, thirty miles an hour and forty miles an hour. It's still a construction site, so don't go zooming through there, even though the pavement is very nice now and much. I drove down there last summer when I came out to look and about shook my fillings out in my Jeep going down through there. Now it's really very, very nicely done.
Yeah, Bill, I was going to make the same comment. I saw about twenty to thirty social media comments about, you know, "Oh, it's like, it's beautiful, it's smooth as silk." But people are going sixty-five, fifty miles an hour down there. So folks, do the speed limit, you know, be safe.
And maybe I, I can talk to the chief about doing a little.
Reconnaissance there.
Reconnaissance down in that area. The final paving cleanup will be probably late spring, once the weather warms and the asphalt plants warm up. But it's really a nice job.
It feels, I drove it tonight, it feels great.
Way ahead of schedule.
The chairman, they're working on the sidewalks. Those, I imagine, aren't going to be finished until next spring.
I would guess most of them won't.
But I, I tell you, I went through there today to avoid the congestion downtown. And they, pouring rain, and they were out there working like dogs. There were some Balthazar people working on Main Street, but a lot more working on Thirty-One. So they're, they're, both companies are trying to get things done before the, the snow flies. But I'm unhappy to report that my daughter called this afternoon from Paxton and said it was snowing to beat the ban there. So it's not far away.
Yeah, wonderful. Through the chair, I spoke to Don Bertheum's, Donna Farmer.
Legislative assistant.
Legislative assistant. And she called, we're waiting on those poles to be moved. And that's what's holding the project up. And they're waiting for the cable company to come in and do their work before Verizon can move the poles. And she was going to make another call. It's supposed to be done before the twenty-second, so there's still time to get the poles out of there and still do the concrete. It'd be nice to do it, so they don't have to add calcium to the concrete. It's still warm enough.
Right, right.
But this can be a heck of a.
You're referring to Main Street, Warren.
Yeah, a lot, a lot easier.
In front of Suggden?
Yes.
And the final item I have is, we have two subdivisions, Longdale Woods and Deer Run, that have been pending for quite a while. And in both cases, the developers are wanting to do their Phase Two, but there's still work to do on Phase One. And so, Paul and I met today, went through where we are with those. We're going to put together a list, working with Steve Tyler and Evan, and probably, not probably, and the treasurer's office, because there's also past due taxes and things like that. And then we will meet individually with those developers and lay it out for them. This is what we need, we need to get done. Paul indicated that the planning board would like to have us do that with both of these, so that we get them back on the straight and narrow. The developers are eager to do their second phase, because now the housing market's back. And so, they'd like to move forward. But it doesn't make sense for the town, at least in my mind, to allow them to move forward until they take care of what they initially were involved with. Is that, is that something that's headed in the right direction?
It is.
Yes. And we will keep you informed of where that's going. Great, moving forward. And we will do it in a courteous, professional manner, not, you know, "You guys got to get this done." It's, this is a benefit to all of us, and we can get this finished as soon as possible and move forward from there. All right?
Very good.
And that's all I have tonight.
All right, Bill, thank you very much. Board liaison reports. Anyone have anything to report?
I have a couple of comments. I'm not sure they're liaisons. Well, I guess the Town Administrative Search Committee is.
Yes.
We held a meeting Thursday evening. We're very quiet around here in the town hall. And we developed a list of questions that we are going to consider. What we did is we went through some questions that Mr. Ross was kind enough to get for us and prepare for us, and some others. And we chose the ones that we felt were most relevant, and we changed a few things here and there. And we're going to meet again, hopefully on November thirtieth, to, to go over them again and massage them, if you will, get them perfected. I am a little bit concerned that we haven't had a lot of applicants. With today's mail, Brenda, how many do we have?
A total of four.
Total of four, which is not a lot. I realize there's still a couple of weeks to go in the month. But the deadline for the Beacon is in the middle of the month. And I'm, and I'm going to author, I have authorized putting another ad in the Beacon, adding a little bit more language to it than what we had in the original one. I want to include the size of the community, the range of the salary that we agree to, and also the fact that it is a, customarily, a four-day work week. I, I've talked to a few people, and the previous town administrator worked when, when necessary on Fridays, but very rarely did he have to work on Fridays. I think that's going to make it a lot more attractive to people, knowing what the salary is and knowing the fact that it's usually just a four-day work week.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, there's a crisis, I'm sure whoever we hire is going to come in, like Adam did when we had the water crisis, you know, down at the treatment plant and everything. But that doesn't happen very often. So, just to keep you up to date on that. Also, I did attend the SMOC opening down on Bixby Road. I was able to have time to go down there after a funeral with a good friend. And the apartments are beautiful. The only thing I would ask is that they try to rent some to town people. A lot of the people that are down there, I understand, are coming in from other communities. And it would be nice to know that some Spencer folks had a chance to live in those beautiful apartments. They're very nice. The nice thing about them, a lot like where I live on Liford Road, it's quiet, it's rural, but you're only minutes, you know, two or three minutes from the Big Y Plaza or Spencer Center, which is really nice. And they're affordable for those people who have low income. They do have an interest, a sliding scale on the, the rent and everything. And they're very well-made, they look very nice, very appealing. They have nice windows with views in many of them of, you know, just the woods, which is very relaxing to look at, I think. So I urge people in Spencer to apply, and hopefully, they will. We'll have some Spencer folks living down there along with the folks from out of town.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Ralph, I was unable to join you. I'm glad you went. Isn't there also a link to the rail trail, isn't there?
Yeah, that, yeah, thank you, John.
It's a very nice recreational.
There is a link.
Feature. It's, we came up in Parks and Rec. I think it's, it's very close. It's, it's a great walking experience.
Yes.
It's just more, more of our housing should be linked to our recreational facilities.
Yeah, you're right, John. Thank you.
Nice idea.
Yep.
Anybody else have it?
Just a couple of things. Tony, I, it seems like it's taking me a month to get back into the, into the routine. But I'll be, I'll be at the school committee meeting tomorrow night and speaking, just doing my regular liaison work and, and reporting. And one thing in relation to the schools I want to report is I met with the art teacher today about, about getting back to our, our student art in the town hall. And we're, we're looking at a, because of the, the way this, the school, the schedule's set up, she'll feel confident she'll have student artwork for the, at the end of the second quarter, which means we'd be looking at, at some new artwork in, in, in January, and after a lot of the holiday activities are done. And I, and I said that I would really like to turn it into a nice exhibit opening, because we're planning to expand the number of pieces. And we're looking at ways of, of framing them that makes it easy to swap out student work in the future. We also discussed the possibility of, of using the storefronts at Suggden. I mean, where we get, gets maybe some sculpture or some 3D art, but also just, you know, maybe just in the windows, but I think, I think it would. So there's interest in, in seeing that growing, and it's a, you know, she, the, this art teacher is, you know, she's the only art teacher up there, really has her hands full. But very, and, she's very interested in seeing this going. And, and one of the things we want to do is figure, is, is to come up with a, a plan to involve the, you know, to really make this a student-driven project, so that it's sustainable, so it doesn't require a selectman or someone from the town to constantly push on it. So we are looking at, at doing this a long haul, and I'll, and I'll keep the East Brookfield Select Board involved there, just to let them know what their options are, how they hang them in their municipal buildings or libraries. If they choose to do, it'll be up to them. But, so we're working on a system there. We are looking to, to have them back in the town hall with a, with a couple of, of changeouts each year. And, you know, Parks and, just, just to report briefly on, on Parks and Rec. Because I said to Bill, Parks and Rec has, has requested that, you know, Bill to come to one of their meetings after, it'll be after the special town meeting. So assuming everything gets approved, they'll know about the, the spending schedule and about the capital and all, because I said, you know, we're, we're not about to put, you know, put new docks into a lake that's about to freeze. But there will be issues of timing and, and initiating, you know, the new Parks and Rec coordinator, if, if all that, you know, passes as a package. So I, so everybody is very hopeful about that, that it'll go through the, the town meeting successfully. And we'll, we'll be looking at a, you know, you know, with, with, with good budget numbers to work with in, in late winter. We'll, you know, excited about the idea of having the beach open again. But then, you know, we'll take it one step at a time. Thank you.
Anybody else on liaison reports? Anyone like to have citizen's input, another shot? Not if I had the apple?
Kelly.
Oh. Board member and staff comments. Mr. Administrator, I'd like to, as a group, decide a work session in the near future where we can sit with Steve and, and start discussing prioritization of the, the road.
I just spoke with him about that this morning. And said we need to sit down and take the list. He's got them prioritized, at least according to the condition of the road and the traffic and so on. And then we need to look at about how much we can accomplish per season. And I'm guessing, and Steve thought this was about right, but somewhere between two and two and a half million dollars is probably about all we can really accomplish effectively in a summer. We might be able to do a little more, but that's, that's a significant amount of work in a community this size, so. But yes, that's something that we want to talk about at a workshop session.
Great, great. I'd also like to mention that December second, the Christmas Parade of Lights is, is set. It's one of our most successful events we have in town, so we'll see everyone here, there. And we, we urge the businesses or anybody who wants to put a float into the parade to do so and get, get in contact with Wendy Bertheum from the Celebration Committee. So it's a, it's a great event. We'd like to make it bigger every year.
And it has been so far.
It's growing.
Chairman, I'm going to mention, I think I CC'd you on, on an email I got, my response to it. I heard from Mary Madden's family, and I've arranged through Chief Darren to have her picked up by a cruiser and brought to the parade, so she can once again serve as grand marshal.
That is great. That's awesome.
That is good. She'll like that, right?
Yeah. That's good. She always enjoyed that and the.
Family fun day.
Yeah, family fun day. We gotta get that going again, too.
That'll be next on our list, Tony, bringing everything back. I just wanted to let everybody know that start in December fourth, Talk of the Town will be up and running one more time.
Oh, very good.
It was one of the highest requested things for cable access.
And who's the host going to be, Mr. Woodbury?
It would be I. I'm not sure everybody's going to really enjoy the topics this year, but it's all going to be thrown out there, so hang on, so.
Sounds good. Thank you for taking over.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to invite the townspeople to make the meeting, the town meeting on Thursday. Then everybody gets out to have their say and, and, and vote and be a part of the community.
Thank you, Warren, because that's very important.
Absolutely. And we don't want to be there in our cell phones trying to get people to kind of make a quorum either. So let's get more than a hundred people there.
Yeah, yeah.
Blowing the fire whistle, what they, that they used to do when they blew the fire whistle for fires. They used to do that, blow the fire whistle that was, it's up in the bell. You ought to hear it when it goes off upstairs, right, and the bell free. And the firefighters would go to the fire department, and then they were told, "No, you've come to the town." It was so unfair to do the fire bid. But that's how they used to get a quorum back in the old days.
I know, I know Laura does a reverse diamond one.
Yes, she does.
Day of or the day before.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the quorum for a special meeting is fifty.
It is.
It is.
It is.
But still, we'd like to have a lot more than fifty.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just, I'd just like to, just to, I thank the American Legion for their efforts on the Veterans Day Parade and, and the dinner. It's always one of the highlights of the year for me. They do, they do a great job. And, and this was the second year that Wire Village did a special recognition for veterans. It's really nice. They have the, the students will, students and staff identify and provide pictures of the, of the relatives in, in their lives, you know, uncles, nephews, you know, grandparents, all family members. They've got a nice little PowerPoint presentation they do. They identify each, each veteran present and, and family, and kids come up and, you know, pin them. It's, it's really a nice event. For me, it's, it's like a nice little trinity of, of Veterans Day activities ahead between the, the dinner, the parade, the Wire Village. It's a nice, it's, it's a great tradition they've started there. It's, it's really very touching. It was, it was, I was really quite moved by it. Everybody was. It's, it was great to see, so. I know, and it happens during the school day. I know it's, it's a tough time for people to get to. But I, my schedule has permitted me to, to, to see it the past couple of years. It's a lot of fun. They do a great job. So I, it's nice to see them recognized, you know, in several venues.
They picked up where Lake Street School left off. Lake Street always had a veteran ceremony. And when Lake Street was closed and the younger kids moved up to Wire Village, they stepped in, which is great that they did.
Okay. Oh, the veterans love that, by the flag outside.
Yeah.
They, they love that, so.
And I'm just going to report, Mr. LaVenture, who was not in the parade, who was not in the, at the dinner, made the parade.
Did indeed.
He's our, he may be the last remaining World War II veteran in town. I don't know that he is, but he may be. And he also made the mass on Sunday at Mary Queen of the Rosary, so.
That's right, that's another one.
I congratulate, congratulate him for his service and thank him for his service, as well as all the other veterans. And congratulate him on, on being able to make it to the parade and up to the mass yesterday.
Did he wear his uniform?
He absolutely did.